We call this meeting to order. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Hoyok City Council for February 19th, 2019. I would ask everybody to rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll bless America.
I think it's very appropriate that we had our former president and city councillor Kevin Jordan both present and leading the Pledge of Allegiance for us because it was Kevin's idea, I forget what year Kevin, to do that at each meeting. And it was a well, an idea that has carried on for many years now. A great.
Joe, you want a motion to?
We're going to go to public comment.
What, do you want a motion to chair the meeting?
Yeah, that would be nice, Councillor Bartley. A motion hasn't been made in second. I started to make an announcement and I, Councillor McGee is not going to be present this evening. Our city clerk is not present this evening. Irma will be taking her place. Councillor Tomlin will not be present this evening. And I believe Councillor Bresnahan will be joining us shortly. As senior member, I'm opening up the meeting and I would be happy to chair the meeting if a motion is made.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the good councillor chairing this meeting? All those in favor, any opposed? Councillor Brown Martinez.
I just want us to take a moment of silence as the mayor's grandma also passed yesterday till this weekend, I'm sorry. So if we could have a moment of silence as we, before we continue the meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will have that moment right now. Amen.
Mr. Chair, do you want to call the roll?
The clerk will call the roll. That's the other thing that, you know, it's been a while since they've been up here, David.
Take your time, sorry.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan. Leahy.
President.
LaBelle Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee. McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin. Bacon.
Here.
Valentin.
Here.
Just a quick announcement besides what I just noted, our councillor Anderson Burgos will be voting first this evening as pulled by the lucky coffee can earlier prior to the meeting. We do have public comment. We do have one member who has signed up, one member of the audience who has signed up, but no stranger to this body. Kevin Jordan of 18 Raymond Avenue. Welcome councillor Jordan, and the mic is yours. You're the only person that's signed up, so you get all the minutes that were not allowed.
I promised not to use them. I'm trying to persuade you on something, so I don't want to overstay my welcome. Mr. President, thank you. It's really a pleasure to be here once again before the city council. I would just like to say the focus of my discussion this evening is relative to a potential proposed ballot question relative to building two new schools and having a debt exclusion north of somewhere between 110 to 142 million dollars. I wanted to first point out to you that there is a proposal currently in the Charter and Rules Committee to ask you to put a ballot question on. It is suggested to you that it should go on the mid-May ballot. I just wanted to say as a parent of two kids in the Hoyok High School as well as one in middle school currently, I certainly have a very vested interest besides just being a taxpayer here. First thing I wanted to point out to the council is that this proposal is really an unfair one to you. The first one is it would be an absolute tax burden nightmare on the citizenry of Hoyok, and I'm going to suggest to you that mortgaging our future is not pro-children. In fact, it's quite the opposite because you have so many public needs that you need to do. And we can also accomplish the goal of having good schools for our kids, including this current situation. So the first thing I would point out to you is that just this past year, we raised the tax levy again, 1.6 million dollars. We also recently increased the sewer rates by 25 percent. Over the 15-year period before we hit the levy ceiling, we doubled the tax levy from 28 million to 52 million dollars. So I would suggest to you the taxpayers are already very much doing their fair share to make sure government runs with the dollars that it needs here. The current proposal, if it were to be adopted, would have somewhere between a $3 and $400 impact on the average home. And of course, as you know, average means 50 percent of the homeowners that would be in addition to that amount. For the businesses in this community who are already struggling, we're talking about on the average business, a north of a $1,000 tax increase. And I would point out to you, this is going to be, when they call it temporary, it's for 30 years. That, I don't think by anyone's fair definition is temporary. I suppose in a, in a completely temporal sense, I suppose it is theoretically temporary. It's not forever. But 30 years is quite a long time. 30 years ago, none of us would have envisioned that the Mounton Power Plant would have closed, and with it went $7 million a year in tax revenue. I would suggest to you that adding another 50 to $75,000 on the Hoyok malls tax bill is not in the best interests of the people of this community. And that is a company that's really hanging on by a thread. They already sold the Berkshire Mall, which is struggling to stay open. This mall is already facing tremendous pressures. If we lose the $8 million a year, or even any denigration to that, just imagine the multi-year impact and the devastating impact of losing those commercial tax dollars. The point is, this tax proposal is not needed. Number one is, we can build, if we follow the SBA rules for 80 percent funding, which allows for $333 per square foot for building construction. They do not pay for school land acquisition. They do not pay for demolition. All those things would be unnecessary if we went to a rehab or a repurposing proposal. These things need to seriously be discussed. Now, the city of Hoyok, in its proposal to the SBA, is required under the state regulations to provide a renovation proposal. I had an opportunity to read that over 300-page document, and in it, you will see that their proposal suggests two things. One, that Lawrence and Peck schools can be rehabbed for between 170 and 220 dollars per square foot. That is below the $333 per square foot that the state allows for the 80 percent reimbursement. The proposal that is before and is heralded as the one that we want to go and ask 100, and by the way, their proposal's not 110 million. It's 132 million dollars. They need to be transparent about that. And the fact of the, and by the way, it also says it could go as much as 146 million, but let's just say it's 132. 58 percent of that is all the reimbursement we're going to get. We are foregoing tens of millions of dollars just in the initial proposal already on top of what would be, what, a 60, 70 million dollar request in terms of funding a bond that would have to be funded? Now, we all know in this room, that's present dollars. So if you multiply that by 30 years, times the 4 percent interest rate, you're north of 100 million dollars of money that does not need to be spent. So coming back to this rehab proposal, we faced these same conundrums before in the past. With Hoyok High School, it was decided by city leaders that we're not going to go like Chickaby and tear down and have all these cost overruns and spend north of 100 million dollars on a new Chickaby High School. What we did is, we had a $20 million rehab of Hoyok High School, and the place looks great. We put in central air conditioning all the way down. Hoyok High School has never looked better in the past 55 years that it's been there. I would suggest the same to you. If you were to put 20 million dollars into Lawrence School, or 20 million dollars into Peck, these schools would look unbelievable. They would look absolutely fantastic. And you could do that, get the 80 percent reimbursement, you're only talking about eight to 10 million dollars. That's about $458,000 per year on a 30-year bond. That is not four and five million dollars a year. You wouldn't need any tax increase. I just showed you, this year alone, we went up on the levy 1.6 million dollars. That's three times what it would cost to fund this current rehab or repurposing proposal. I've also heard good suggestions from other people in the community, talking about how Dean is being used for less than half of what its capacity is. Peck is being used for about a third of its capacity. These things, we need to be smart and we don't have unlimited cash. And I would suggest to you, this community has so many needs, it can't waste 100 million dollars over the next 30 years. We owe that to our children, to have good parks, good streets, CSOs. I mean, all the many issues that we're not even thinking about today, no more than we thought about 30 years ago. So the point I want to make on the finance side of this is, we can do great schools for our kids, my kids, your kids, all the kids of this great community, and not waste 100 million. However, I will say this, if you're going to have a ballot question, you got to make darn sure that, number one, it's not in mid-May when it's a ram-through job. That is just so anti-the-participation. If you're going to have it, it should be on the November ballot. First question comes up to me, why waste $50,000 to have a special election? That's another waste of money. But besides that, you're missing an opportunity to have a community dialogue about the needs. Why not have multiple proposals on it? A rehab proposal, a do-everything-in-the-kitchen-sink proposal that's being offered? And allow the voters, if that's going to be the way we're going to go, to let them decide in that situation. Also, the question has to be transparent. You can't put, the way I'm currently seeing the wording, it doesn't get into any of the specifics about, what does this cost me as a taxpayer? What does it cost the businesses? How long is this for? What is the total amount of the total cost? All of that needs to be transparent in a ballot question. So all those points, I would suggest to you that if we're going to have it, it should be in November, and it should be with a lot of dialogue. I think if that happens, this would not pass in a November ballot, because I think the citizenry are going to say, we can, we can do the schools and we can make these really important improvements without completely mortgaging the future so that the city no longer has any more liquidity to face the issues that we have now for capital needs and those over the next 30 that we're not even aware of today. So we have to be very smart stewards of our money. I went, I don't come down for public comment often, it's my first, but I will say this, when it gets to a point where I'm about to witness 100 million dollar waste of money, I want to suggest to you, there's a better approach. And I look forward to the committee, and I look forward to sitting with anybody who'd like to go through these facts. It's just something you need to be aware of, and that's why I want to come down. So thank you very much, and I wish.
Thank you councillor Jordan, and thank you for the seven and a half minutes. They're goes by record for this meeting.
Good points. Thank you.
There are, there are no other members of the public signed up, so we're going to go on to item number one.
Mr. President, can we suspend rules, take items one and 22 as a package, please?
Motion made second to suspend the rules to take two items together. On the motion to suspend, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item one is communication from the mayor regarding a proposal for the former geriatric authority property. Item 22 comes under councillor Bartley's name. It's a Mass General Laws 30B Hoyok Procurement Ordinance to accept the offer from B2 Health LLC to purchase the land and building at 45 Westfield Road adjacent to the land for $250,000. The properties are identified in the Hoyok assessors. We have the map numbers, and we have both map numbers for, I believe it's in three, three sections. So on the motion to receive and?
And refer to DGR.
And refer to DGR. Councillor Bartley?
So it's just, it just, it's the vote of this body that accepts this, okay, so we declared a surplus. So I already have an economic development newsletter, make it sound like this has already happened. It hasn't already happened. And, you know, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but we talked about how at the last meeting, you know, putting the cart way ahead of the horse, okay, on other issues. We've, this is, this is getting to be a broken, you know, a theme, a theme from the mayor's office. We're, we're going to, we're going to look at this in committee. This is, has a major impact, whatever this proposal is, which we haven't even received it, but it's kind of a major impact on Holy Family Road, that area behind Bennett Field and Donahue School, and Lower Westfield Road. So I'm very hopeful that when, and we will take this up on March 4th in the DGR committee. So I hope to have whatever proposal before us, and we can disseminate that. Certainly want to get it in the hands of the Ward 5 councillor, so she can bring it to her constituents in that area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is refer to committee on DGR for both items. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item number two is also communication from the mayor appointing Mr. Winklin to 22 Dale Street to serve as the Commissioner and the Council of Aging. He will serve the remainder of Ms. Carmen Morales, a term which will expire August in 2019.
Motion said public service.
Motion second to receive for the committee on public service. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item number three, communication from our city clerk. Make a motion, receive.
And accept.
And accept. This is the minutes of the full city council meeting of February 5th, with narrative included.
I'd just like to make one amendment, one for?
Councillor Murphy?
I had an order in there regarding domestic violence, and I know councillor Lisi wanted to have her name on that, and I know with other issues, she got her name on, but I noticed when she didn't, so I'd appreciate it if we made it Murphy-Lisi on that.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend the minutes to reflect the order with the domestic violence filed under councillor Mercy's name includes councillor Lisi's name. On the amendment, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. On the motion to receive, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item number four.
DGR, please.
Motion made second to receive, a communication from Lisa Zoller of the Administrative Office of Community Development. This is the recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Office of Community Development for the Black Mountains 2019. Motion to receive.
We'll take this up March 4th.
Committee on DGR, and the committee on DGR will be meeting on March 4th to take up this item.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Councillor Leahy?
So you're going to take it up March 4th? When, when does the full body vote on this?
March 5th.
The following night?
So we're right, that's, I appreciate the question, because we, that's councillor Valentin was working on that, and Alicia Zoller was working on that, so we're right on schedule for their requirements, councillor Leahy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Five and six as a package, please.
On four, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved, DGR. Motion to take up, suspend the rules and take five and six as a package, all those in favor? Any opposed? Item five is from the Board of Health, their minutes, December 7th, February 1st, April 5th, June 7th, September 6th, October 3rd, October 15th, and January 3rd of 2019. The rest are more 2018, obvious. And from TJ O'Connor, Animal Control and Adoption Center, a copy of their minutes, which is November of 2018.
Be received.
Motion made second to receive. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a discussion under item number six. Bunch of us had voted against their budget when we did the budget for the Thomas J. O'Connor facility, and I think the only reason why, at least I can speak for myself, voting against it, is because I wanted some sort of collaboration, some sort of conversation. And they came in front of us, they came in, in front of the Finance Committee, and having, having them come in front of us, they did a fantastic job talking about exactly what they do and what, how they benefit the city of Hoyok. But not only that, they're sending us their minutes, and these are very, if you get a chance to read them, they're excellent minutes. And so I think sometimes you have to, you know, light a match, but yet, I think we're all on the same page now, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion to receive, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Seven and eight as a package, please.
Motion made second to suspend the rules to take items seven and eight as a package, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Seven is a petition of John P. McCann, 415 Engleside Street. It's a renewal of a home occupation for massage therapy and yoga. Item eight is the petition of Carrick Williams, 97 Locust Street, also for the renewal of home occupation, this one for property management and preservation.
Receive and grant the renewals pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid.
Motion made second to receive, to grant these home occupation renewals with any existing conditions, as long as we know that everything is up to date. On Mr. Williams on Locust Street, we have a communication from, from our treasurer stating that everything is current, property tax, sewer, water, gas, electric, and municipal fees. And on petition for Mr. McCann, we have same communication, all the same are current, property tax, sewer fees, water department, gas, electric, and municipal. Motion on the floor is to receive and to grant, to grant the renewal of these special home occupation permits with any existing conditions. Is there any further discussion? If not, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of each of the special renewals. If you vote no, you're voting against each of them.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBelle Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anonymous.
By your vote, you've adopted and renewed both special home occupation permits. There are no committee reports this evening. The agenda does not say anything about a president's report, but speaking to a couple councillors, I believe, although we don't have our president with us this evening, and I'm not going to make a formal report, that traditionally, we do make this kind of a quick open-mic session for any announcements. And I see councillor Lacy has his hand up.
Who's Lacy?
Councillor Lacy. Councillor Leahy, whoa. I'm buying, I'm buying round one.
All right, thank you councillor McGinty. First of all, with a straight face. I just would like to say, whenever we don't have our fearless leader, Mrs. McGee here, I always want to say, thank you Irma for coming in, filling in for her. It's always good to see you. The second thing is, I do want to know, or let people know, that there is a celebrity bartending night in regards to fundraising for the St. Patrick's Committee and the road race for the parade, and that's going to be this Friday, February 22nd. It's going to be 5:30 to 9:30 at the Knights of Columbus, which is located in 250 Westfield Road. This is an event that was strategically placed, or created by our own councillor McGinty's daughter, is it McGinty, McGivern? I'm not sure. But they, Kelly has done a fantastic job on this, and she's going to have Dee Riley playing there from 6 to 9, which is my cousin, she's always great to see. And she's putting bartenders versus bartenders, which is going to be exciting. So from 6 to 7, it's going to be Slantia versus Pix. Then from 7 to 8, it's going to be Brennan's versus Francie's. And a very important one for everyone to take notice to, is 8 to 9, it's going to be a Hoyok one versus a South Hadley players. So it's going to be Griffins versus the halfway house. So I encourage everybody to go out there and support the Hoyok business. Having said that, February 22nd, I hope to make it there, but it is my daughter Caroline, Caroline's birthday, turning 17. So I want to do my best. But thank you very much for your time.
Just thank you councillor Leahy. And just note that the other good, our good friends of Ward 8 over in South Hadley are official members of the Parade Committee. It's the only community that joins Hoyok in the, as official members. Councillor Juan Anderson Burgos, I know everybody knows he's a grandfather, and there's someone celebrating a special birthday today.
Yes, today's my granddaughter's first birthday. She was born a year ago, February 19th, on President's Day last year, and she's a piece of heaven, and she's Hoyok's future, and I'm so proud, I really am. I love her to pieces.
You can see the glow. Great. Councillor Murphy?
Well, if we're going to do birthdays, my older sister, it's her 83rd birthday today, so happy birthday. She told me she was going to watch, I told her we wouldn't sing, because I've heard you sing before, and it's not pretty.
You're in big trouble though, because you had to say your older sister.
Well, well.
I would have said my younger sister.
Since I've been back in this chamber, I've often been told I'm the oldest, so I want to make sure. But I also want to announce that next, starting next week, in conjunction with Morgan School and Donahue School and the Parks Department, I'm going to be running basketball gym programs in those schools for the first to the fourth graders. On Monday and Wednesday, it's at Donahue School, and on Tuesday and Friday, it's at Morgan School. I am still looking for volunteers. It's going to go, starting next Monday until the April school break. So we're trying to see if we can get some more recreation programs into schools, and I'm hoping that this is an example of getting back into schools for that. And then, my hope is that maybe next year, we start to expand it to all the schools and start having more after-school activities, and take them a little more into the evening so that, I know, I'm sure for some of you, when you were younger, you were in gyms in the evenings, and I like to see if we can get back to doing that. So that starts next Monday at Donahue and next Tuesday at Morgan, it's 3:45 to 5:15, and it is for the students in those schools, first through fourth.
Question on that?
Nice. Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, maybe under the spirit of the St. Patrick's Parade Committee, however, having bartender versus bartender, maybe you could have councillor versus councillor, because I'd love to take on Juan Burgos.
In dancing?
Dancing? No, basketball.
No, I dance.
You got me there.
Yeah.
Good. Let's play for money.
Is there anything else in open-mic? The chair would just like to recognize that we have two councillor Lises this evening, and we're enjoying the company of one who I think is smarter than everybody else in this room.
Welcome.
All right, no committee reports. Moving on to motions and orders, which will start with item number nine. Introduced by councillor Lisi.
Hey Joe.
This is a, I'm sorry, councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring the group up to speed on some of the stuff with the school building committee.
Okay. How much stuff, Mike?
About a minute.
It's a, the issue is, it's not on the agenda, and it's items that are before us. And I understand on our committee reports, we often do this, but there's nothing on the agenda. So if you're going to, if this becomes a discussion, then we're violating the open meeting law.
All right, I'll wait.
Sorry. I think it's important, and I think we need to get as much discussion as possible, but we also have to follow the open meeting law. Item is introduced by councillor Lisi. The Hoyok City Council passed a wage-staff ordinance to ensure that all contractors, developers who receive public funds, city contracts, tax breaks, housing development breaks, would need to comply with the state laws governing payment, wage, and hour laws, as well as any other obligations that would otherwise be required by the municipality to meet. If possible, the ordinance should also include advantages of Hoyok residents, for Hoyok residents to obtain the work and ensure women, people of color, and veterans are hired on the construction projects.
Receive and send to ordinance.
Motion made second to receive, item number nine, refer to committee on ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
With the permission of the maker, can I be added on?
Absolutely.
Councillor Brown Martinez will be added on to the order. Any other discussion on motion referred to ordinance? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item number 10 is introduced by councillor McGee. This is to increase the allowable payment limit from 1,000 to 1,500 dollars for amendments of Mass General Laws 59, Section 5N. Make a motion to send to ordinance?
Second.
What does that law reference? Is that?
Or Charter and Rules?
Work off, or is that the veterans' work off?
I don't know. You know, it's not specific.
I don't have all the MGLs memorized.
It would, it would be to ordinance though, either way.
I just want to know what topic it's on.
Sorry. That's all he wrote.
All right.
On the motion referred to committee on ordinance, all those in favor? Any opposed?[1697.71] aside time for executive session, if necessary, in order to discuss certain police projects.
Refer to finance committee.
Motion to make second to receive, refer to committee on finances, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number twelve introduced by Counsel McGinty. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53,80, the city hereby accepts the provisions of the Veterans Heritage Grant Program, authorizing the establishment of a fund and create the appropriate method for the accounting of receipts, expenditures, and resources of said administration of grants.
You see, refer to finance?
Motion to make second to receive, refer to committee on finance. Finance committee will be meeting on Monday, the 25th. Not a big agenda, but a couple of items, hopefully we'll make these two items into that.
6:30, Joe?
Into the agenda, 6:30. And one of the items is a contract with the DPW workers.
Joe, can I ask you a question that you probably weren't prepared for, but if you can answer it, that's great. Where are we at with stabilization?
Free cash or stabilization?
Free cash, rather, I'm sorry.
Free cash. It hasn't changed since the auditor told us at the last meeting, which my notes are in Counsel, Mr. Counsel Lacy's desk over there. But... Do anybody remember the number?
Under $23,000, I believe.
I think so, but she added something to it, which was, first time it's ever happened. It was a clerical something. It was a little bit more.
Okay.
But we're, might be a little short, a little more than $200,000.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Motion to refer to committee on finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirteen is introduced by Counsel Murphy, Sullivan, and Tallman. Order that the Development and Government Relations Committee meet with the Director of the Office of Planning and Development, the Director of Community Development Office, and Representatives from Hoyoke Housing Authority, One Hoyoke, Valley Opportunity Council, Nueva Esperanza, and other interested parties to discuss short- and long-term plans for improving the Churchill neighborhood. At this meeting, the areas should be discussed specifically are the corners of Jackson and Maple Vacant Lot, Jackson and Chestnut Vacant Lot, Franklin and Chestnut Vacant Lot, Hampshire and Elm Vacant Lots, parts of Walnut Street between Sargent and Hampshire Vacant Lots, and poorly maintained properties and Commercial Street Vacant Lots, Sargent and Jackson Streets. Goal is to move the process to be recommended, to recommended action, and help create the timelines that we can and should be done by one of the agencies, I guess. Chair, entertain a motion to receive and...
Refer to DGR.
DGR? Any discussion?
Just real quick.
Counsel Murphy?
It's just, and I had met with a few of these agencies already, and there are some properties that are now on their thirtieth year of being a vacant lot, and there's others that have been owned by agencies for fifteen or twenty years with no action, and what didn't appear to be any plans for any actions. I just want to get all the parties together. You know, the people in the neighborhood certainly deserve to have something happening in their neighborhoods instead of vacant lots. And, you know, so far, most of the parties that have been invited seem to be pretty interested in getting together and trying to work out a plan as to who should do it, which agency should, if it is an agency, and then where are we going to get the financing or whatever.
Mr. President?
It's a good point. Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. I would just suggest to add in representative from the redevelopment authority, because I think it's part of the urban renewal plan, that area.
I'm fine with that.
Second.
No objections, a friendly amendment to add the voice of the redevelopment authority, a voice from the redevelopment authority, which certainly can be the chairman, and also City Council Lebron Martinez, still part. Excellent point, Counsel Murphy, and I think, over the years, the city has learned to put reverts on properties that we sell, and, you know, if the proposal doesn't come through in a timely fashion, the city has the option to bring back. I think many of these lots are properties that were transferred to certain other authorities and other entities, and I don't believe we do, are in the habit of putting, or the city's in the habit of putting, that reverter on it. Might be a good idea to talk about. Any further discussion? Counsel Murphy?
There are a couple there that, you know, are privately owned, but what they're asking for needs to be discussed, and I think, you know, I know the assessed value and what's being asked is far out of whack, so I'm hoping that we can get to the point, if we get a common function, that we can do something and improve those lots, because, like I said, they've been there for thirty years.
Thank you. On motion to refer to DGR, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item fourteen introduced by Counsel Murphy. Order that the Public Safety Committee meet with the representatives from the Police Department, District Attorney's Office, Law Department, the Building Commissioner, to determine if buildings owned by certain landlords have a history of greater or greater tendency of criminal drug activity than others. If that is the case, to discuss what legal means are available to hold the landlord fully accountable and improve in the quality of life for all of the residents. Motion to receive and...
Refer to Public Safety.
Refer to Public Safety Committee. Counsel Murphy?
Yep, just real quick, again, this has come both from constituents and from conversations with the police chief. You know, I just want to make sure that if we have landlords that have multiple buildings and have multiple legal problems, I mean, I've got tenants that are telling me, once they go into their apartment, they lock the door, and they don't come out until they have to come out, and nobody should have to live like that. So we need to, whatever legal capacity we can have, or we can generate to hold these landlords accountable for allowing illegal things to take place, and it's not one or two little legal activities, it's multiple and day-to-day. So I just want to see us moving, and again, I don't want to, I would love to never have anybody come to me and say they're concerned about leaving their apartment. Nobody should have to live like that. So my hope is that we'll get everybody involved, and we'll take the fullest action we can against any landlords that are not maintaining a legal residence for their tenants.
If there's no further discussion, motion on the floor is to refer to committee on Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item fifteen introduced by Counsel Murphy, Counsel Lebron Martinez. That the city council meet with the Department of Public Works Superintendent to discuss the possibility of providing refuge disposal, permit fees of charge to renters, just as is residential homeowners. The policy deactivating a permit card with the landlord has failed to pay for the sewer use charge should be discussed. Motion to receive and...
DGR?
I'm assuming it is an ordinance, but I couldn't quite find that.
Yeah, ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, it is.
Motion to receive, refer to committee on ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
And again, this came up at the meeting at Lawrence School, where the Churchill Community Group, and there were quite a few people thinking, number one, that they were never informed how a renter could get the permit, and number two, that why, why as a renter do I have to pay for a permit when the homeowner can get it? And again, they're all citizens, and they're all residents, and potential, the other aspect to that is just, if they went and they paid for the permit now, and the landlord failed to pay something, they forfeit their permit because the landlord didn't do something. And again, most of those things, to me, just do not appear to be fair to everybody in the city, and so I'm just hoping that we can take the $10 fee and give renters that opportunity, and also, if we're going to hold anybody accountable, it should be the landlord, not the renter.
If any language exists in ordinance, and it's in that big ordinance with the, with trash pickup and all, you know, everything that we do and don't do, if it's not an ordinance, it may just be a policy of the DPW when they set those permits.
Well, just a friendly amendment, could we send a copy to Legal, so when we have it, bring up an ordinance we have, basis for discussion?
So the motion on the floor is to receive, refer to committee on ordinance, with a copy to Legal, to research what we're looking for. Any more discussion?
Also, so do we also go to DPW for feedback, or no?
Happy to DPW. I'm hoping, I'm guessing that the ordinance committee will bring them in, but yes, copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item sixteen introduced by Counsel Murphy. It's a handicap sign, 290 Chestnut Street. Motion to make second to receive, for committee on ordinance, with a copy to the handicap advisory committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seventeen introduced by Counsel Murphy. The DPW placed the following sidewalks on the list for spring projects. East side of South Bridge Street, from South Canal to Jackson Street. South side of Jackson Street, from South Summer to South Bridge Street. North side of Sargent Street, from South Bridge Street to Southeast Street. Motion is to receive, adopt...
See the text and refer to DPW.
To refer to DPW. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Number eighteen introduced by Counsel Murphy. The DPW pruned trees in the following areas as soon as possible. These trees are restricting residents from opening windows because branches are right near their windows. Trees to be pruned are located on 586, 558, 554, 521, and 561, South Summer Street, 15 and 17 Hamilton Street, and 23 Sargent Street. Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and Forestry Department. Any discussion? Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, this, and I actually want to thank former Counsel Lopez, who, when he was candidate for this position, he mentioned, I took notes as I was sitting, and read it again, but he had brought it up, and I took a walk down those streets, and a lot of these trees are literally, if they open their window, the tree branch is going to come in, or the bird is going to come in, or squirrel, or whatever, but, so I've met with John Tuig, and I'm pretty sure he can see the problem, but the other issue is, we don't have a forestry department that can just do it. So hopefully, we'll be in a position to contract for a relatively small amount to get this done. I mean, it's probably, I'm going to say, about fifteen apartments from a half a dozen to a dozen trees that are causing the problem, and one or two of those trees are also dead, so.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to adopt, refer to DPW and Forestry Department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item nineteen is introduced by Counsel Bacon. That the auditor treasurer provide an updated spreadsheet on our borrowing status, including monthly carrying costs of current and already approved bonds, and not yet purchased. Please also include the monthly estimated cost of an additional $60 million, 30-year bond.
A motion to receive, adopt, and refer to the auditor and treasurer, and ask them to provide a report for our next city council meeting?
Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to both the auditor and the treasurer, and look for a report at our next city council meeting. Counsel Bacon, just so you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but if it works, on Monday, for the finance committee, on Monday, the 25th, we are going to have one of your orders, similar, but different, but similar to getting the auditor to our, the last order that you just filed, and I think there's another one that goes with it, that's been sitting there for a little bit.
Thank you.
On the motion, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty introduced by Counsel Anderson Burgos. Order no parking to be, to corner sign be placed on, hang on. Northbound side of Jarvis Avenue, 20 feet prior to the entrance of Daybrook Village, vehicles parking on the corner are presenting a hazard obstruction to drivers attempting to exit.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion to receive, refer to ordinance. Does it need an ordinance?
I think so.
At intersections?
Be enforceable.
Well, the law itself says 10 feet, so...
Is it 10 feet?
Yeah.
I thought it was 10 feet for driveways and 20 feet for intersections.
You could be correct.
Yeah, because it's not really a corner, it's a driveway.
Gotcha, sorry.
Mr. President?
Counsel Barkley?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yep.
And I just, I just to the chair, too, with the War six counsel, there's a similar situation for a United Bank on North Hampton Street. I don't know the street number, but that would be on the, that would be on the east side, so that would be the northbound side of North Hampton Street for a United Bank. It's very difficult to exit that. I don't know if I want to have a no parking, but I'd like to have a, I'd like to take that up at the same time as this, so maybe that would be a no parking or limited parking. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll second that as an amendment?
Amendment made, second to add, can I just have that?
It's North Hampton Street in front of United Bank. I don't remember the street number, Joe, but it would be, that's what you might say, the east side of North Hampton Street in front of United Bank.
Okay. On that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. This order is also introduced by Counsel Bacon. I just was reading off the agenda instead of the order, and my eyes got crossed on the way this agenda bumped. Any further discussion? On the motion to refer to committee on ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-one introduced by Counsel Bartley and Counsel Bresnahan. The city install a crosswalk across North Hampton Street near Washington Ave. and Lawler Street. The purpose is to improve the safety of students getting to and from Metcalf School.
Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW?
Second.
Oh, okay, that doesn't need an ordinance?
It may. Is it an intersection, or?
It's, it, yeah, I don't, I think we should.
If it's not an intersection, I suggest you do an ordinance.
I think it should go to ordinance. I, yeah.
All right.
I wouldn't want to discuss.
Refer to committee on ordinance, just to make sure.
It does say near.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that. Okay. I'll second the motion to ordinance.
Any discussion? On the motion, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. We already took care of item twenty-two, it went to DGR. Item twenty-three introduced by Counsel Bartley. The Hoyoke Public Schools Receiver send a communication to the city council regarding the school department's plan for Metcalf School.
Receive, adopt, and refer to receiver, and just under discussion, if I could?
Motion to make second to receive, adopt, and refer to the receiver. Under discussion, Counsel Barkley.
I had a very pleasant conversation with Dr. Reich last week. I want to thank him publicly for spending about a half hour, 45 minutes with me. This, he also had a meeting at Metcalf School, and it's already been announced that the, Blessed Sacrament is going to close what we call the Old BS at the corner of Hitchcock and North Hampton Street. So that will cease to be in operation as of June of this year, and then the receiver announced, but there's a variety of dates have been put before me, so I'm a little bit unclear as to what's going to happen with Metcalf School. Because of the popularity of the dual-language program, the school is bursting to seams, and there's talk about removing that entire program and relocating it E and White. I asked the receiver to, and the receiver indicated that that may close Metcalf, maybe for the start of the 2021 school year. So those are two major properties on Route Five, North Hampton Street, that have been in operation for, both were well over 100 years, and if those come to fruition, that's going to have an impact on that part of the city. So there's not much I can do about the Blessed Sacrament Parish's decision, but I think we should get a communication from the receiver as to what's happening with Metcalf. So I asked them to, if you could send something to city council for April, maybe April or May, before we get into the budget time. So, just so we have something on the record, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Just a question to Counseler Barkley. So, I mean, I know, and I've been coming here, obviously, I got in here with all the school issues, but I just, one of the building things that was done in 2016 indicated that Metcalf was one of the best-conditioned schools that we had, with the exception of it wasn't fully accessible. They're not, I'm assuming, they're not talking about just not having any educational facility there. Do you know that? I mean, if they're transferring out, are they putting something else back? So here's a building, I guess it kind of goes along with Counselor Jordan's comments there, is, here's a building that, in 2016, got one of the best ratings from people that had reviewed all of our buildings, and, other than the accessibility, seemed to be in pretty good shape, and got good reviews pretty much up and down the line. And the other aspect to that, if we're having a lot of people taking the dual-language, and that's a great thing, who knows? Maybe the possibility of, if Blessed Sacrament's not going to use that other building, I don't know what kind of shape it's in, but maybe we have a campus of dual-language that would then keep the facility there, keep the, obviously, it's working well, or it seems to be working well there. So instead of going out and having to redo everything, we'd be in a situation to keep the Metcalf School operational, unless that report that I just read from 2016 has totally gone wrong, it seems like it's in good shape. So, you know, I'm just hoping that, you know, we don't make decisions to close something without getting the entire picture.
Mr. President?
Counsel Barkley?
Okay, that's, just through the chair to Counselor Murphy, that's exactly why I filed the order, because we, this is just not in the public, Mr. President. It's innuendo and a whisper campaign, and yet there was a public meeting at Metcalf School on February fifth, I was advised by a constituent of the meeting, not by the public school system, that's okay, but a constituent advised me, so I was able to go, and I heard what I heard, and I, but before I filed this order and the next one, I confer with Dr. Zright in person, just to make sure he was okay with it, but we've got to get this out in the public. The question becomes, as to Counselor Murphy's, what's going to happen to the building? Well, Mr. President, you and others would be surprised to hear, one of the comments to me, oh, why don't we just turn it into a condo? Like that, is it that, so the long-term plan is, there isn't a long-term plan with a viable school building that's, maybe has a very limited playground capacity, and maybe smaller classes, but it's been a school since 1911, and it's a rock-solid building, and we're going to turn our backs on it? So, but just to finish my point, Mr. President, relative to what we heard from the public comment tonight, those are, that's a major contingency, and Dr. Zright, to his credit, said that the night of February fifth, and he said it to me in person, that's a major unknown, as to what's going to happen with any debt exclusion votes, so we've got to hear where this goes, but it needs to be in the public, as opposed to little in-house parental meetings, this has got to be a wider discussion, and I'm glad we're having it now, but we'll hear more from when Dr. Zright sends his letter.
A point, a point well taken. The only thing that's been mentioned in meetings, Counselor Murphy, other than what Counselor Bartley said, is that the schools are looking at closing, if the middle school projects or any building of new schools go through, the schools are looking at closing at least two schools, but depends, depends on a lot of things, and until that comes to fruition, they're not going to commit to anything. But I think the division is important, you know, let's start thinking now before we have another lynch on our hands, because once they stop using it for schools, it comes back to the city.
Again, my major concern is, it is a good building by all accounts, so, I mean, and I have heard that it was one of the ones that was potentially going to be closing if that passed, but, I mean, again, not officially, I've heard.
There's nothing official, yeah.
So, you know, again, I just think we need to take a look at, we get the whole picture before we do anything, and again, if it's been a successful program and it's in a good building, let's try to keep it, and let's try to keep it going in that building.
Anything else? Counselor Bartley?
This is my third time, can I say something?
No objections, go ahead.
The dual-language program is, to my knowledge, Mr. President, the one program in HPS where we have out-of-district kids coming to Hoyoke, as opposed to what we heard at the last meeting about, you know, the reason why Smith Academy's still up and running is because of so many Hoyoke kids going to Smith Academy, but we have an incredible set of teachers and administrators for our dual-language program, it's a huge hit at Metcalf, a huge hit at Ian White, and it may also be at Morgan, but I'm not positive there, but it's very popular and it's growing. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, the motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to Dr. Zright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-four introduced by Counselor Bartley, with the Pablo Freire School leaving the city at the end of the school year, this order will request that the Hoyoke Public Schools receiver send a communication to the city council by the end of May to advise us on any financial impacts this will have on the city.
Receive, adopt, refer to receiver.
Motion to receive, adopt, refer to the receiver. Any discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Just, thank you, Mr. President, it's just what we, just what we thought, it's the school, that school is, again, I just put it on the public domain, the school's leaving Hoyoke, it is going to the former Hoyoke Catholic in Chickaby, near the Elms College. The receiver said to me that now that they're leaving, HPS is going to make a concerted effort to reach out, which it can do legally, it's, so it is legal, reach out to all those students and say to them, HPS is here for you, and we want you to come back to HPS. The other question, open question is becomes, well, if they're, how many are going to leave to go to Chickaby, and what impact will that have on the busing burden for the city of Hoyoke? So that's why, and I went over a couple of these things, and there's probably a hundred other questions I forgot to ask, but Dr. Zright is aware, and he said he would just give them a few months and he'll prepare something for us.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to Dr. Zright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-five introduced by Counselor Bresnahan and Counselor Bartley, order that the school speed limit sign, very similar to the sign located at Lawrence School, be placed in front of Metcalf School at the crosswalk of North Hampton Street.
Oh, ordinance, please.
Motion second to receive for the committee on ordinance, any discussion? All those in favor? Counselor Murphy?
Does anybody know how many schools don't have those kind of signs in front? I know Hoyoke High School used to have one, it's gone. Dean never had one, I'm trying to get one put in there. I mean, it would seem to me like we would have them near all the schools.
Blessed Sacrament has one, but it works at seven o'clock at night.
Well, to your point, the problem is those machine, we had this, I think, in public service or safety, I forget which, maybe finance, the ones that we have are extremely old and literally trying to get parts, Bill Fuqua was literally buying these parts on eBay. They're old.
Well, a friendly amendment would be in order, then, so just, whatever schools don't have them. So, so HHS, and then I think, yeah, so...
We had requests, some time ago, I think, I requested one for Kelly School going up the hill.
We do an order that every school needs to have one.
Yeah, so just a friendly amendment to have HPS review them, and then we'll put them before.
Friendly amendment that we review all, all the, all our schools, and the issue of why these things are not there to protect both our students and parents who are using crossings and speed limits.
Copy to, copy to receiver and then refer to ordinance, and receiver and DPW.
Copy to receiver?
Second.
And refer the order to the committee on ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We have one late filed order.
Whoa.
Introduced by Counselor McGinty himself. Introduced by myself, sorry. This is that the city council review the end update, if necessary, Section one oh two thirty-four, the collections of fees. The fee schedule is Chapter one oh two, weights and measures of the Code of Ordinances. The fee schedule was last updated in 1997. This is at the request of the superintendent of DPW, just for information purposes, and we, I think some of the history is, we stopped, or the mayor, the city stopped filling the position of weights and measures, and the state's been doing the, doing the work, but I guess there's some issues as to what it costs when the state does it, and what's in, or what's not being collected from the people who have to, you know, have this performed, it might be an annual basis, but I know it's at least, at least once every two to three years. This wouldn't be stop and shop, gas pumps, everything, you know, it's, anything, it's got a scale, anything that's got a pump that, you know, creates a sale price. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so I just, so we had a department on weights and measures, and we had somebody doing that for a number, well, decades, and then sometime in 2012 or 2013, that department head was eliminated, and we transferred it out to the, I guess, the state police, but I'm not sure who does it, but that's the background that I know, so I guess we should just transfer it to, to ordinance, I would imagine.
Yes, yeah, and I did tell the superintendent that the, that would be part of our discussion, I'm sure, to compare and to update us on, you know, what the difference is when we used to do it in-house. So the motion would be to receive, refer to committee on ordinance, I apologize to the late filed order rules, because I think we just violated by having a little discussion, but so be it. Refer to committee on ordinance, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. He's back. All those in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned.